President.
No, we just did everything.
Okay, we have no special presentation tonight, so go directly to public comment. With that, as everyone can see, we do have a couple of items that are important to the community and with the storm, I was expecting that we wouldn't be having people in here tonight. So it's a discussion from the city manager. For the most part, I will, once we get to the items, I will be moving to table almost every item, except for the emergency operations discussion tonight into a future meeting. So therefore, feel free to make a public comment on agenda items. In fact, I encourage tonight, if you have something to say on one of the agenda items, please come up and make a public comment on that tonight.
Mr. Mayor, which in particular item?
We will be doing new business item A.
Item A, new business item A.
Yes.
Okay, so that is 14A. For the record.
14A.
For the record, I would respectfully request you to make a note as to the agenda. It says closed session. Please inform the people that we had a closed session that was canceled.
Yes, and for that note of record, our closed session was canceled tonight. Well, for this evening, so there is nothing for report from closed session and we did not have this. With that, I will open this up for public comment. Any member of the public would like to make a comment on any city business and come up to the podium. We'll have three minutes. I will give a thirty second warning. We'll do what each individual's here first, followed by Zoom. With that, if you'd like to go ahead, do the seat.
Sure. Since I don't know much about the agenda, it just looks like a chance to talk. My name is Rich Muir. I live at fifty-seven oh two Castle Avenue. After thirty-five years, raised family there. We're looking to retire there and we're looking towards keeping our house and the family in perpetuity. We live next to the creek. It's been a subject of discussion for some time now. If I'm not mistaken, long on twenty years. When the creek was stopped. Great loss for me, my wife, our family. And I think to somewhat lesser extent, but still importantly to the public. My experience in dealing with this issue has been that over the years, there have been things that could have done, should have done to mitigate to some extent the blowback creek. But in my experience, very little effort has been taken in that respect. I don't blame the people sitting here, or most of them so much, for what happened. And I'm hoping that on the basis that what I see here, they can do their best to just give us a little bit of grief. I must see a great loss for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you, Big Dave, for being a good council member. Dave, tonight's your last meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate everything you've done and you've led with the heart and you stood up when you didn't have to. That's honorable. I also want to encourage our new council members to come in and take a lot from what Big Dave did and don't dive into the cesspool of teamwork and friendships on city councils. We all have our individuals in this town and we want to be represented by individuals and not by teams. So please, I encourage them to do that for us. And I don't even know them, but I hope they do that. I hope they clean this thing up. Also, do we have a snow removal policy still? Is it existing, one week, not four weeks, existing years? And are we obeying by it? Are we doing that snow removal policy? Are we taking two passes each direction on the street? And I don't understand why we aren't able to do that because when I left a couple of years ago, we had really crappy equipment, probably eight guys, and everything was getting done. We had what, eighteen of them, and it got done. I think, I don't think it can get done now. I'm worried as a citizen that you guys have a bunch of new equipment, you, a bunch of new guys, and you can't even get the job done. And you're out there, you're making what, a hundred and fifty thousand a year to go plow streets? You got a director who's non-union out there plowing streets for a hundred thousand a year? I'm really confused and you still can't get it done. So please get it done as a taxpayer. And next to the works supervisor who used to do this job, I know you can do better and you're not. So follow your policy and do it right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. Beautiful city of Dutzbeere. Is this mom?
Yeah.
Good. I simply wanted to thank the entire community for our recent Veterans Day celebration. This is our second annual effort building on what others started years before. Looking at council member Kai Sler and the construction of the Veterans Memorial at our city cemetery. This year's sponsors were the city of Dutzbeere, Chamber of Commerce, the Eagles Rotary, the Halls Bash Foundation, which is a great child of Fred Taylor and a couple of others that is going to be specific to supporting the Veterans of Dutzbeere in the years ahead. I hope you all get involved in it and warmed up. We were led by Steve Bryant at the Resource Center, Len Orman organized the essay contest, the Eagles Lunch organized the march, the hot dog lunch. Collectively, I went with Alfred Julian Casey who put together the essay contest, won by two high school students, Dutzbeere High School. Speaking on the topic of great freedom, the Big Spur and Sheriff Ruth. And thanks go out to Sergeant Ortiz who got us a colored door and made it more shiny. It was, you know, somewhat weather constrained, but again, looking forward to a bright future for this community. I know Bruce has done a number of things to try to integrate our school system into honoring veterans. That's very important. I hope as you two step into your civilian roles, it will make next year even better. But thank you all for supporting veterans in our country and in our community. The only other comment I have, Mr. Mayor, is on item thirteen E. Having seen the memo, discussing it tonight, I still am satisfied that there's no clarity to it at all. That is, commercial building orders have sixty days to fix noted defects. There are several obvious buildings with obvious defects, that is broken windows, peeling paint. I can reach the ordinance, but could we have an actual evidence for it? Where is the city that started the sixty day clock on defects that are obvious and need repair? And I hope that stays on the agenda until the city starts replacing the wall. It clearly won't vary now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Macheski, fifty-three thirty-four River Avenue. Two things. I'm kind of concerned about the big snow piles at the top of Cedar and Pine. I'm not a business owner, but if I was, I'd be pretty pissed off about that. A lot of people discover Dutzbeere by driving down our main street. So I'm not too sure how they can access the rest of it. If the temperature is dropping, it's just going to make things more difficult. I'm not too sure in the past if that's always been the procedure. I do recall it happening last winter, but something I think needs to be done about that or considered there for next time it snows. I understand rain's coming and this will go away, but it will happen again. And I just don't think that that's fair to some of our business owners, especially if we want to have business here. I understand the meeting is going to be cut short, but I do have some extreme concerns over one of the items on the agenda, which is the HR consultant. I really want you guys to take a closer look at this. You want an HR company doing remote work out of Texas on a computer, video monitor, to look at things like our safety processes, our hiring efforts, employee evaluation? Some person on a computer in Texas, you want to rewrite our procedures? It just does not seem right at all for thirty thousand dollars. We really need to look at that. Rewrite the job descriptions? I mean, where's the union involved in things like this? This is a major, major red flag, guys. Please, somebody read the attachments and look at this much closer before this is considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks on story ten ninety-two. So I just have to say really, 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 Bruce, Dave, you guys are awesome. I missed you last night. Thank you so much from the whole town. How many people have said they're so sad to be leaving you in city council? So, see you guys. It's completed three terms tonight. Congratulations twice mayor, first person twice mayor.
I'm watching my girlfriend, though.
You would have liked to have, I should have run my boyfriend's. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
It's the side. It's the side.
There each other level comments, please. We have one more person in the room. And if you would like to make a public comment on Zoom, there's a reaction staff, raise your hand.
All right. We're going to let those two go. They all voted to go to the snow. So I'm trying to be prepared as well. Get a stack of those, one more twenty E, and they're about thirty-eight years. All the voting, all this stuff, I'm not all caught up on, but this is what I have to say about mine. Why, where, and always and forever. Power, cruelty, fear, kill. It's not an acceptable loss. Animals don't kill. Their pecking order is racial and true to life. Animals take no sport in killing for ego satisfaction. Love and land, to let me eat it. Nothing more, nothing less. No justification for the kill except because you're hungry. No, I didn't say survival, I said hungry. As an array of power to survive, you must eat. Yet, do so with diligence, truth, along with knowledge embraced with respect. Knowledge is wisdom. There is no fear. There is education and acceptance. A lie compiles another than another than another. Somehow it's a way of something in this universe. It's acceptable. Why? Animals are living beings. They are truth. They're real. They don't fear what's on their. They accept life. They respect you and they live on. Here, yeah, lies. This is cowardly, remember. Instill fear and separate again, then games of petty evil control. Because a lie is a lie, and a lie is fear. To love life with the eyes, her heart, and a quest. And many people don't follow that. Continue, there's a word, continue. Continue your life, create fear. How much greed do you need? Keep looking in the mirror. Acceptable, are you? Or are you a person of lies to create your own greed and continue in fear? All I have to say is thank you to my debts and chocolate truth. And chocolate, stand my ground. Why I say all that is because I read a few things in the paper that about my spirit.
Three seconds.
And what I want to say is that I'm highly consulted by the city attorney. I asked for public reference to notice five days ago. I've got two sheets of paper. My colleague, he didn't take it away. I'm going to the city. I have a good proposal in the works and I'll be talking to you again. Because I'm not an idiot and I do deserve, do deserve respect. And whoever does is going to tell me I don't cause any problems. No, I live in truth and sometimes truth hurts. But editing it tells you you're right.
Thank you. All right. I mean, do you see we have a comment on Zoom? And.
I mean, but I can't. I wish they. I can't understand it.
Let's do that on our end.
I'm having a flashback.
Yeah, me too.
Kate, Kate's talking now.
I think it was Joan.
I think it was Joan, yeah.
Was it Joan? Well, Kate was the one who had her hand for the rashes. She was the one who had her hand.
Let's see what happens with Kate. Let's go with Kate.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Hi, should I share? All right. All right. I'm just chiming in here to say that we have Candles in the Canyon coming up on Saturday, December fourteenth. And I have asked the city for a hard street closure on Dunsmere Avenue from Cedar Street to Pine Street. And then a closure of Pine Street from Dunsmere Avenue to Shasta Avenue. And I'm also asking for the city to place barricades at the closure locations. And that's it.
Thank you very much. I'm sure we'll have that on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else on Zoom? Is there a reaction staff? And raise your hand. Seeing none, I will close the public comment for this evening. Right. And with that, we will move to our council and staff comments and we'll start with the, start comments.
Thank you, Mayor. With the storm, the sheriff's office has been busy. We will be controlling the river frequently. And we have coming tonight, we have coming days, watching the water levels.
Additionally to that, so that's part of recently shortened the meeting and removing the question of where we're going to the next one. So if you've been around town, there's been, I don't know, we had something like forty trees go down. Number of trees that hit houses and a couple of total losses. We did have, we have a library. Hellfire will be here tomorrow and possibly through the weekend assisting in recovery efforts. They, we're working in our sector today and we'll keep them on track.
We'll keep them on track through tomorrow at least to assist in removal of trees and debris and any, anything associated with flooding.
No injuries though?
None that I'm aware of. We really, we were really close to the house on Branstad, but he made it out safe amazingly. So that was, that was a pretty tough one. So I think there's still power crews, there's still power outage off of Prospect. They were, did not have the pole in yet at four o'clock, but they brought, I just saw three additional trucks pull into town at around four thirty. And so we have additional power crews working in town. I have not seen any communications crews yet, but the expectations will show up shortly. I was in contact with National Weather Service this afternoon. And the river hasn't really gone up yet. We're still, we're just at two feet. I did go down and look at it. One of the biggest concerns is expecting three to seven inches of rain between now and Sunday. And it hasn't really started flowing yet. So the snow is substantially heavier than the normal. So we encourage people to consider looking at the roofs and taking, taking some of that weight off as we, it may continues. We are in communication with the county. Stephen's been in communication with them continuously over the last thirty-six hours. And we are monitoring the elevations of the water at the dam. Currently, there's still eleven feet of space at Lake Siskiyou. But with all the moisture on the ground already, that can go very quickly. So we will.
Yes, is there any way that we can get the word out to the people that are in flood? I've talked with Stephen about this, but I'm really concerned that there's all kinds of people out there that have no idea what's about to happen around them. And I'm hoping to make some creative way to get word to anybody in the community. So I mean, I'm going to care a lot about that right now.
Yeah, no, no.
And the sidekick is, the mic is, what about, do we open up the, you know, limits or someplace for people to go?
So, so we have been in contact with the county and in the event that there is evacuation that from that area, we can't open a community center. We do have the generators on site in the event of power, which we're hopefully past the loss of power component. But we're still in the flood concerns. And so, yes, we've been discussing after the last, you know, since yesterday, we've been kind of coordinating that with the county on if we need to open it or not open it. And, but we are ready to open if we need to. And if we do. Yeah. And so Stephen's been in contact with them regularly and we're putting the word out. We did, I did discuss with National Weather Service and they're planning on putting additional information out. They're rechecking levels of moisture that have fallen in addition to the snow to kind of see where we're at and what they can expect. And so they're running, running new models this evening. And hopefully we will have some more information out. And they're going to put additional information out about the heavy snow loads and those type of things. Because we haven't, I don't know if we've seen any collapses yet, but we're, we have seen water damage inside buildings. So Stephen, do you have anything?
Well, we also should be discussing this.
Well, yeah, that's the, the item that's actually on the agenda. It's the, it's the draft emergency operation procedures. So we can, we can address some of that stuff there, but associated with the storm, I always. So.
All right.
And we do have sandbags. So sand and sandbags is in front of the steam engine. Available for anybody to use. We just refilled the sand this, this morning.
So you said that the sandbags and the sand are in front of the steam engine seventeen twenty-seven, the black train at the community building. Did everybody get that? Because I got phone calls today saying, where's the sandbag works at? They're in front of the train at the community building.
Yeah, and I believe we posted that yesterday. We posted it yesterday.
And we just said that they're underneath the blue tarp with several concrete barriers.
Correct.
They're underneath the blue tarp. Underneath the blue tarp. Sandbags are underneath the blue tarp in front of the train at the ball field. Now I know you heard this.
The library, the library. Did a tree fall?
I wish, that would be easy. No, we had, there was over twelve inches of snow on the roof and with all the rains, it saturated and backed up and flooded the entire library. So we're in damage assessment mode. There wasn't anything ever going after. There was no debris, nothing this afternoon. We scooped off the roof so it wouldn't rain, but it just.
All the boats are going there?
I don't know. No, I mean, we definitely, we had a couple inches of water on the floor. It was like it was raining in there and it was marked it. So we lost the ceiling again. So we're in the process of assessing what that's going to look like. But we have a recovery crew in there working this evening.
Yeah.
I think I covered everything.
All right, actually, we discussed briefly the snow on Pine. Well, wouldn't it be part of the.
Well, I can, I can discuss that now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the snow on Pine and, I mean, we're not even twenty-four hours out of the stop, snow stopping. So our intention is to move that snow. It's just in the midst of it and the weight of it. We've had some equipment issues and so we are a little bit of equipment short and we're not able to get it all moved, but our intention is to move it. Businesses on Pine can access from the bottom side. It is plowed up to the ridge, but nothing from the top down. Because we need to remove it. And then over here, we have to get this parking where we normally put the snow, was parked full of vehicles. And so we need to get those removed.
We know you're going to get the vehicles moved.
We haven't told any vehicles. So we didn't put warnings out on, we did put warnings out on trailers before the, before the snow.
Thank you. All right. And with that, any comments and any service comments?
I I I want to thank this community. For believing in me this long. This has been one of the greatest honors I've had to represent the people. I I've never been one of those Detroit guys, follow that. I dig digits from the living very much, so. That's who I wanted to represent, the guys who are in trenches. So I hope I did a good job for y'all. Ain't going nowhere, like I said. So. Thanks. Bruce, it's been an honor to serve with you. You came in here with that voice, you shut, you people won't pay names down and. You represented, you you've been on the board directors with me with the state of California, you 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 were the top student at college. It's a bit of a pleasure, Bruce.
Well, um, thank you, and I'll return the compliment and having served, not looking at everybody else. Uh, I actually hadn't planned on making any kind of statement, uh so I I'll just say simply that. I'm not going around, there's one of the things I'm working on, my plan is to develop the uh, at least a South County nonprofit news agency that will. Have a separate newspaper and online and paper in each of the three southern cities. And I understand there's a lot of money out there for it now, Norwegians are realizing that uh not having any kind of communication is a real problem. So between that and I'm also lined up to be the president of Roney, Roney come July, so I'll be busy. And even informed by the two things I want to bring up today are that um. We just have what's on our plate. Um, it's something I've really been proud of. Seven years ago, Steve and Brian and I. Got together and we put together on one hand the town hall that I had a previous year to uh educate people on all the different. Food resources around the area for anyone who's in need. And uh when Steve and got together, we thought about putting it together with the, getting out the turkeys and the hams. And so this is the seventh year. It was a little sad, obviously, it was because of the weather, there was certainly a chance for a lot of people to be there. But what I'd like anybody who knows anybody who um is concerned by the resource center to know that if you're qualified for the turkey and ham. The resource center will be open both on uh tomorrow and on Tuesday and Wednesday. Um, so you can go down and get your turkey and ham. I want to make sure that um that doesn't get dropped in the process. At the same time, one of my side things is I'm on board at the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, which runs all the resource centers. And I can make a really exciting announcement that today at the OR um in a closed session, we decided we were going to hire that guy for for good. Stephen Bryant. So Stephen Bryant, right now, is the permanent executive director of the Resource Collaborative. Which kind of interesting when I was at the uh what's on your plate, um I asked anybody, just getting ready to say that, hey, anybody here? Is anybody up here not knowing Stephen Bryant has a little girl raised her hand and that was it. Everybody knew Stephen because he's made such a difference in our community. So really big shout out again. And then finally, uh Blake, be ready, be close to me, I'm not ready to start already. Okay, so there you go. Uh, that is the QR code that is to get your phone and it's up there on this one item. Behind you. Well, yeah, but uh there's a little fun little mountain kind of thing going on. So the whole idea is, what I want to announce is that now we're gonna have, this is a QR code that if you took it right now. It will go to show the next one please, this place. Now, this is visit Dunsmere. It was created by Benjamin Goodpasture as part of a marketing thing for Hay Springs. And what Kate Clover did, after we talked about some of, some of what we were trying to do at one of the mixers. Um, Kate Clover was able to line it up, but this will now be the page that gets landed on when somebody goes to the QR code. In order to connect to the downtown wifi, the QR code will be there with the little uh, you know, mountain river and and uh railroad there. And when they click on it, it'll take them to that website. And that website is already full of an incredible amount of tremendous kind of marketing. Get people to come here. And at the same time, I'm working with the chamber to put up uh a a system to be able to keep track of all the restaurants. Where hours was open, all the events, all the history, all the other things. So this is a really big moment, so what we're basically doing. Is taking the ability of having the downtown wifi and letting people see this QR code on menu, on a table, in a restaurant here in town, wherever. They click on it, all of a sudden they have this, and now they have everything that's going on in Dunsmere. The goal is to move this beyond Dunsmere, take it apart in the county. And what we work on, I haven't discovered Siskiyou, but what that would mean is somebody visits Siskiyou County and they want to spend the weekend with their kids. They have a whole slew of different things to do, places to go and everything else. So that's what I wanted to make sure I had a chance to share with you all. That's the process we're in. And right now, uh later on this week, they'll be able to log onto that and see that. So there you go.
Cool, alright. Um, keep mine very short. Uh, I know Peter went too extensively, but I would also just like to thank the mission of your day. And Peter, we have the Sheriff's Department, uh for all the, any for all our perfect way to issue that celebration. Ceremony.
I forgot to mention, and one of the persons that wasn't mentioned, with Peter, they've all these mentions with Peter, so thank you.
Yeah, thanks to everyone involved in that. And uh it was a. And he already mentioned that the candles would be getting even coming up on the fourteenth. Uh, I think that's our next community event. Alright, and with that, we'll move on to motion to table. There were no committee reports. Um, we'll move on to item number ten, approval of the minutes. A second. Alright, all of the favor. Through uh item number eleven, consent agenda was three items, second register for eleven two, eleven fifteen. Alright, all of the favor.
Hold on, I think we need to roll call some consent agenda.
Okay, we for the. Okay, can you do a roll call? We have no vote of hearing tonight.
So you want to do thirteen eight, right?
Well, no, it's, yeah, fourteen eight.
Oh, okay.
So um I'm moving to the table, uh items thirteen, eighteen.
A second.
Right, all of the favor. Item's table, uh this is the item of fourteen, A, Dunsmere Operational Procedures for Emergencies Overview and Special.
Oh no, he's on the quick, he's ready.
Well, I can introduce Stephen, since he was hired as our grant, under our grant for hazard mitigation. So um he's been working diligently to update our our dope plan and uh so he's uh. Like we've gone through it, I don't know, four times now, so hopefully it's uh now it's ready for you guys, so.
Alright, uh so my name is Stephen Kier, I'm a consultant specialist in the city. Uh, so I'm going to go over the Dunsmere Operational Procedures for Emergencies. Um, this plan is one hundred and fifty-eight pages. It was done in the House and it is on our website in draft form right now. Uh, the plan is to take this plan to you or to council next meeting on the fifth, December fifth, for approval and adoption. Uh, but I did want to take this opportunity to present it to you, to give you some time to look over it. Um, and ask any questions that you may have about the plan. And I also want to highlight some key parts of the plan. Uh, that might be most of the most interviews, but also I do recognize hundred. Alright, so what is the dope plan, the Dunsmere Operational Procedures for Emergencies? Um, typically, this plan is called an emergency operations plan for most locations. Um, however, our previous plan was from nineteen ninety-one. And it was named the dope, so I wanted to kind of honor that tradition and keep it, because I thought the name's pretty dope. So this plan establishes emergency organizational structure, assigns tasks, provides guidance, specifies policies and procedures. And provides integrated coordination of planning, response, recovery efforts for large scale emergencies. Uh, that's excerpt from the executive summary on page five. Um, again, the last time that this plan was updated was nineteen ninety-one. A lot has changed since nineteen ninety-one. Um, September eleventh was the key uh thing that happened in the field of emergency management. Where a lot changed just after that event, same with the training in two thousand and five. Um, so really between those two events, everything has been rewritten since nineteen ninety-one. Um, and so we really had to do a complete overhaul of this plan to bring it into compliance with those standards. Um, and to, you know, bring it into compliance with best practices that exist. Um, so again, this was done in the House, my. So um free planning for everybody. So this again was not a. Uh, so what's in the plan? Uh, so section one is the plan overview, section two, situation and planning assumptions. Section three, concept and operations, uh which is really kind of a look into how. Generally, the emergency management structure and emergency function. And then section four, control and coordination, that gets into. Uh, more of the leads, more of how we are going to do things here in Dunsmere, where our agency would be activated, which is an emergency operations center. Um, the, you know, relationship with the county versus operations center, how that would work, how you co-locate with them. Um, and you know, you're both activated, um how we would staff our own, our existing staff recognized in order of very small jurisdiction. Um, and then kind of staff training that needs to be done and that sort of thing. And then section five, rules for responsibilities. That gets put into emergency R versus operations center and its structure, uh with the different sections, the management section and prime. Logistics uh and operations. Uh, so it's kind of looking at those, and then saying, of course. Um, so it's looking at those different sections and what those sections mean and kind of overview of those.
Question.
Yeah, so I'm assuming when you look at in the overall organization, there's there, there's a junction between state, county and us. So is that a matter of taking theirs and simply adopting it or are there aspects that are customized for Dunsmere?
Uh, so in the state of California, there's the state emergency management system sense. Um, and so that kind of has the desired structure for how emergency operations are structured in California. And because of that, it's it's a little rigid and I do wish we could customize it. Yeah, it's designed so that if anyone from any jurisdiction, come to our jurisdiction, knows how to work and do it for that. Uh, so that's kind of how it's designed, so there are pros to that, there are cons, and that we're really small and, um, you know, some of our staff might be. Been in charge of two sections because uh we're so small, but uh it's also recognizing that in most emergency situations. We would co-locate with the county because it won't just be done, so that's impacted. Uh, and it would likely be the county kind of. Taking that lead in the emergency operations center and thus kind of providing staff to assist. Um, and then also making sure, you know. Uh, that our staff would also be there to make sure, you know, our city's needs are being addressed as well at times. Alright, so there's also more though. Um, so those sections that I remember are kind of like, what's the typical emergency plan, but we went above the yacht. Um, so there's a bunch of appendixes here. These are designed to be uh things that support that base plan. Uh, so the evacuation quick guide is exactly what it sounds like. It's like the E O C was to activate, that's a quick guide that we can go to. To say, okay, we need to do these things to get it out of there. Um, E O C section checklist ties more into the different E O C section, which is people more afraid about what they need to be working on. Uh, alert warning, so this is kind of how the alert warning system works in the county and how we coordinate with the. Um, county alert warning authority, this is the county sheriff's office, um and to get those alert warnings and how how they can do that. So we have a better understanding about what's there to me. Uh, but then also how we would uh, you have in there a new sirens calls. For our city sirens. Previously, we've been having to work down about, you know, what exactly you should do with the sirens. If something was happening, but what what's that mean exactly? So in there, there's now a concrete uh sirens policy. Um, in an evacuation order, uh which is higher than evacuation warning, in an evacuation order, we would sound the evacuation. Siren tone for two minutes. Um, so that would go off for two minutes, it would go off once. Um, that way it'll let, let people know, hey, something's happening. Um, at that point, they need to be going to, hopefully there's enough to learn to get that alert, but they need to be going to, you know, the sheriff's office to figure out what's going on.
So that's one continuous kind of.
Correct. Uh, it 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 makes a, a little sound, a, you know, on off kind of sound, but it is, it goes for two minutes.
I want to make sure, I mean, you haven't forgotten about that look for a grant, the one where you could actually feel verbal and.
Right, we haven't, we haven't forgotten about that. Uh, we're not available for this cycle, unfortunately, because the hospitable nation plans last, but. Uh, we will be available next year and that is something we want to go after. Uh, it is tricky these days, but we are, we do want to.
I mean, it's a whole difference and all the confusion that can go on, be able to tell people what's going on instead of just throwing out the signal and everyone has to figure out what to do. So I'm glad you're still working.
Yes, so I totally agree. We if if we have a verbal one, things would be a lot better than if they're actually telling.
And just checking the hazard mitigation plan of life, so the county hazard mitigation plan, we fall, correct?
Yes, I will, so it is our county, because I think we all are, yes, but it's, yes. Um, it should be um completed by, I suspect, March, or we can sign in order with letter before council around that time. Uh, so that's my.
I just wanted to make sure that that was all county responsible for.
Yes. Uh, and then we have shelter events, which just kind of goes over the basis of how how sheltering works, how we recording, right, possible in a shelter. Uh, so we have wildfire and explosives in the annex, um or two bigger hazards. Um, we have weather support annex, how we reported the weather service. Um, and then some other ones that are. Uh, just kind of things that are typically in plans, um so H or A aren't very exciting. Uh, but then L is they recover it. So this is usually a whole other plan, recovery uh plan for disaster. We just dated the annex and here are page ninety-six, so the last uh sixteen pages or so are, uh, yes, it's for that. Uh, the last sixteen pages or so are all about recovery and how that would work. Um, and I would want to set in there. I want to make it part of this plan, so that way uh the future, whenever, you know, go over a rant and update it, it's included in that update. Uh, and that way we don't have like just another plan after I do other. Can't remember if I'm not, um, let's hold that and then if I don't hold, I'll answer.
Yeah, so I'm most concerned.
Alright, so what's not on the plan? I just told you of those things that are on the plan. Oh, what's not on the plan? We don't have an evacuation plan for the town. Uh, starting in twenty twenty-five, I'm going to be working on overhauling the Dunsmere safety element. Um, and within the Dunsmere safety element, there's a requirement of the safety elements in California to have evacuation planning. So knowing that we were going to be doing this anyway, I didn't want to break this plan, so the reason why the other plans need to be compliant anymore. So, uh, that's what, yes.
For four years, I've bought for the evacuation plan. That was still that kind of help, right? Because it all depends on circumstances. The opposite emergency services will be dependent. You can't have a plan, we'll tell you what to do. Well, if the fire's going this way, you don't go instead of that way, you go instead of the opposite way, which all makes sense. But as far as trying to establish an evacuation plan. If our hands are tied because of circumstances. How can we move forward on that? I agree we should have, oh my God, I'm the biggest. I agree we should have, oh my God, I'm the biggest, I thought, R. But when it actually came to the shelter, we can't have one.
Yeah, so there is some truth to that. Like you never know what the situation is going to be, your situation is going to be different. If a fire happens, starts in town, when you get, all that's wrong. People just need to be ready and they need to, to be able to, there's some, some aspect of that where people need to be able to fend for themselves, knowing that we can't, there's no way a sheriff can not have an original, there's no way a municipality can ever alert. However, we can in the evacuation plan, you know, plan to evacuate for a fire coming from the south or a fire coming from the north, knowing that we have the key yourself routes. And we can do some planning around, around a situation that would be, you know, where we would have a little bit of warning and we would be able to extend people, you know, it's clearly the ring of the south and clearly, or here's how we might stagger the evacuation order in Dunstmere to get the wow.
So your plan would be contingent on scenarios.
Scenarios.
Okay, that makes sense.
Is the new one, county system genesis, is that what it's called? Does that have a zone that would coincide with the floodplain?
The zones do not necessarily coincide with the floodplain. The floodplain is pretty weird, yeah. So, you know, like these some houses on the street, the others. The genesis zones are pretty small. So, and to correct if I'm wrong or geez, but I believe, sorry. I believe that, you know, in situations, you can chop up those genesis polygons and leave it maybe even smaller. We've done that and to speak to that a little bit further, a lot of those, those zone orders are. I didn't push it up.
There you go, don't touch it.
So some of the boundaries to those zones, we actually during the Shelley fire, was that last summer?
Yeah.
Yeah, they all live together now, but during the Shelley fire, we actually split some zones in the city of that, by evacuation routes, made thoroughfares, you know, for example. You know, I'm not saying it's too important here, but I can see like Dunstmere Avenue would be a boundary line if maybe just this side's in trouble at this point. This is, this would be an order, this would be a warning or, or one way or the other. Or North Dunstmere, I can see being a zone versus Blackberry Hill. So it's, it's a lot of those boundaries are on the streets. Otherwise, we're charging through people's backyards. I can only evacuate the house without the, so that's garage, which is also an apartment. Or natural things such as the river or vigil lines, things like that.
Were you, were you involved in actually deciding the zones at one point when it was first created? A sheriff's office, let's say, I'm not saying.
The sheriff's office was, I wasn't. At the table, but during the Shelley fire, we worked closely with the OES.
Well, I'm just thinking, since it was created, since the thing was created recently and it was created with whatever the parameters were, I think it would be useful to go back to the county and say, we would like to have the zones created so that when we have a flood in the area, we have, know exactly who we can get in touch with and send out the alert, just like we would if there was a fire. That's what keeps the one through my mind. There's so many people moved in here and don't know what a flood in Dunstmere can do and it scares me, so makes sense?
You know, in my experience, I've seen mostly used with fire. Yeah, but I suspect with the downs we were in, in the river, you know, there would be problems still. I would insist, I could see where I'd start seeing some of these flooding, you know, when they made Taylor or Florida, Carolina, I don't know, North Carolina, yeah. I'm sorry. Anyway, sorry, I want to have one question. It's good. And then what also is not on the plan, you don't have the air disaster annex or the coordination annex in the plan, those are things that we want to have on the plan. That's the required additional coordination of the county to figure out what we need to have in there exactly. I, I also need more clarity in what I need to have in there. This is different, I'm in Colorado and it's literally a different system here in California, so I need to learn that system. But once we have those conversations, those will be updates to a future Dunstmere operational procedures for emergencies that will come before council for revision adoption. So that is something to hopefully do in twenty twenty-five as well. Alright, so I did want to go over a few highlights of the plan. So it is, there's a link in the agenda packet for the plan, it's on the website in draft form right now. So you can go there and look at it. But I do want to highlight some pages to the plan because I know there go all the curious people. So emergency powers on page fifteen, this kind of goes over what emergency powers we got in regards to the round act and how we would do emergency meetings, different events for disaster, knowing that we tight turn around our emergency decisions, how that would work. It kind of goes over what our powers are in emergencies. One point seven, section one point seven, page twenty, probably even a better comparison. This probably is more worst-case scenario is that happens to somebody in world, one people. But how we continue to operate as a government in that instance. It's not something fun to think about, it is something that's in there, so we have. Section four, command and control, again, this is kind of a bigger, broader picture of our deal with the EOC. And then section five, which is a little more integrated, so really wants to honor emergency operations in parts or how we run emergency, those are the two sections that are quoted. Then the annexes, NXC, the sirens policy, point two, page sixty-three, a little bit about the sirens policy. This was developed with the, with OES and the fire department. So you got those conversations to figure out what the best way to do sirens policy would be in half a degree from this.
Yeah, in the meantime, would you create some kind of a social media post that would go out and let people know what the different sounds could sound, you know?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of people who moved here and have no idea what's happening. You didn't mention what those are, there's a lot of things still going on.
Yeah, so one of the things that I want to do is after we adopt this, to specifically highlight that there's a sirens policy now, so that people are aware of that. And then also, we talked with the fire department, I'll maybe do a test of the evacuation town this spring, as being close to a virus season, knowing that that's, you know, always a scary time during virus season, so that people get familiar with like, this is what the evacuation town sounds like. So if you hear this, that means there's an evacuation.
And that would be tied to a good marketing program so people know what's happening at a time. So the three key to figuring out how, just want to make sure that's key points.
Yeah, yeah. And then appendix E is the wildfire annex and appendix F is the flood annex. These are just a little more specifics to what is, so this is what are happening, things that we'll be doing to kind of help ensure that we're ready for those. So the flood annex, that's what this is kind of doing now, you know, helping them adopt it. And then appendix H, kind of development, perhaps this kind of goes over all the partners that we collaborate with. You may notice that we didn't kind of employ leads for this plan. This is really an internal plan to city operations. So that is why we made those team and call our meetings, but we did have meetings with outside partners. So we had meetings with, conversation with the OES, we had Red Cross. The resource center was involved in recovery annex, so was, it's just economic development center, they were involved in recovery annex part of it as well. So there's lots of different partners involved making this plan, even though we're not calling teams because it's an internal plan. But I think you'll know what we're doing, especially if it will be launched. And so recovery annex, recovery annex is pretty, I think it's really about a great thing for us to have, any events in the offload where to have and recovery is super important. And in a wildfire, in rural areas, typically only thirty percent of the homes get red bulbs. So it's a really dismal number. So we want to position ourselves to be ready to be in recovery immediately so we have the best chance of bringing as many homes possible back, as many people back to the community when something happens in a wildfire. So annex, and recovery annex, section two point one is about recovery group. So recovery group is really led by the DOA, which is kind of Steve Ryan, who kind of would lead that. He's led it indeed in the past. It's, it's important that it's a nonprofit and not a city because there's so many things that need to happen in recovery that are outside what the city does. The city does not do, we don't, we don't do housing support. That's not something that the city does, but that's something that they, the resource center plugging people into, so that's something they do on a daily basis, they're really good at. Donation management, that's another thing, that's, they do that already on a daily basis, they're really good at. So it's important that we tap them and we help them. And in the recovery annex, we say that, you know, obviously more for any to find a way to help, help ensure that they have the funds to do those sorts of things because that's, you know, really important, it does cost money. But it's not something the state necessarily need, I don't have to give partnership. But it's really, Steve would kind of lead that, the city would support. And there's different items within the recovery group that the city would lead or would have a greater role in than others, kind of outlines that in section two point one. Section three, assistance for survivors. So this section is really the biggest part of the plan that's for the topic. Section three, assistance for survivors, outlining all the programs that are available as of right now for survivors of a disaster. And these are government programs, things that people plug into, it kind of, and it has to do with where you combine coordination of all these things. But I really want to create a plan with a one-stop shop to, to both give city staff and people in the theory some basic knowledge of what's available, but also to give people the links to kind of help guide the process. Because it does get very confusing after disaster. You know, programs are sometimes really difficult and confusing. And so just kind of outlines what those are and also people navigate that. And then section four is a new disaster funding guide, this is fully for the city. These are all the programs available to the city to possibly tap for some funding after disaster. So that outlines, I think it's sixteen different programs that the city could apply for additional funding for, to help rebuild after disaster.
Well, please just definitely ask you, yes, one, and you may have this in the plan, so I started from nothing and done. But I know a lot of those assistance, what's available for assistance and those posted as your funding could shift from year to year to year to where it discussed this plan last time, it was updated as we mentioned, like one. I just want to make sure that there's some kind of mechanism in the plan to make sure specifically those two sections get updated on a regular basis. So that way if there is something, something does happen in five, ten, fifteen years down the line, that that section is updated regularly with people, I know about programs that have been, looking at the programs that haven't been available for years.
Yeah, we do say, the makers of the emergency section, you say that we'll look at it annually and to help maintain those sorts of things. So yes, we will be looking at it. So section five, this is the EOC, you guys are the kind of last on the basis here. This is the EOC structure, this is data structure across all EOCs in common with all the various.
Are we on this?
So you are the policy maker. So are you asking about my city council specifically or?
No, I mean the, the city.
The city, so this is how the city EOC would function.
Oh, this is all internal to the city.
Yes, so, yeah, so the colored columns, there might just be one or two people running all those things, those columns, recognizing that, you know, we have a much smaller staff than a larger jurisdiction. But these are the kind of things that we'd be in charge of. It doesn't matter if it's the same person to mean multiple of those things. Those are still all things that need to be done.
Thank you.
Siren call is going to pull it out here. It's a, it's two seconds on, two seconds off, or two minutes. So it's kind of like a one-way view sound. It was described in kind of like a, a siren, a car. And then there's also, so there's the evacuation order, it's also the alert tone, which is separate tones, thirty seconds on, five seconds off, and two minutes. This would be for some action other than evacuation. We specifically, in the, in the sirens policy, do not have, we have examples for what it might be used, like shelter in place, but we do not, it's up to the discretion of whoever is at the forefront of that situation to decide if they want to activate the alert siren, recognizing that the alert siren is very situation dependent. Whereas the evacuation word, the evacuation word tone, siren, is, is an evacuation word we'll, we'll activate it. So that's, that's the difference between the two tones. So we do kind of say some general things for the alert, just they can know that it exists, it's an option. However, it's very, in a situation that, you know, at that point, it's up to fire and, or the sheriff's office, they want to use the alert tone because it could make the situation worse than it was to activate. So that's, that's the difference. Recovery annex, recovery group, so this is kind of the structure of the recovery group. There's six different brands, they're called recovery support functions, R and S. The city specifically would kind of lead the infrastructure line and the planning, the long-term planning for recovery line. And it was national cultural resources as well. And then the other ones would be kind of up to the economic, all the social services and housing would be more focused with the, the Dunstmere recovery scenario and economic development. But they would have a role in all of them, of course, if you have some sort of role in all of them. But those are kind of leads for them, but they get any recovery group lead if you go out, volunteers active after disasters, things like that, that would be as well. This is just the posted disaster funding guide, generally I went over. That's like one of the programs that you can use, posted disasters after. This will be before the council on the fifth for adoption. So just bring me the screen out a little bit and feel free to reach out to the other agents.
I did want to, while I touched on sheltering, so in a real sense, how close do we to having a real plan for recall, all of a sudden we could have to open up the shelter, let's say there wasn't electricity, you actually have a generator, it's all of that things walk through so that we can minimize the stress, you know, if we do get an emergency?
Yeah, so we do, so we would work here with the county. Sometimes the, so the county has the ability to open shelters. We also have the ability to open shelters though too. We would rely on Red Cross to do that. We have had conversations with the Red Cross, they can be up and going each hours. That is their, their time, they expect they hit every, every activation this year. And so typically their volunteers come ready. We did have conversations yesterday when we weren't sure how long the power would be off for larger areas of the community, if we were going to activate the shelter. Red Cross's preference is that it takes a lot of showers, so they want high school or elementary school currently. But we did reach out to Ray yesterday, Ray was said that high schools available needed. And we did have conversations with the county as well. The biggest thing was at that point was trying to get it to the Red Cross here because the highway was shut down, obviously. We did have a generator in place though, power to go out, you have a generator down here that we could plug in. So we were positioning ourselves, but we were told by the city tower that most places would be turned back on by eight last time in the city. So we ended up deciding not to, especially if you would have to figure out volunteer thing. But yes, we can do it. It's something that we have conversations with, got to weigh, you know, how many people will this benefit and, you know, how, there are also big people on roads to get here to open a shelter. So you have to weigh those sorts of things, but yes, we kind of, we'll exercise with it, that's for sure.
But at the same time, I know that, you know, for a long time, they had a key and if all of a sudden there are a bunch of people, you'd have to have them stay wait for two hours so buildings could be opened up and that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, the way it works, the fire chief calls and says, Mr. Mayor, open up the community building.
Just like that.
Yeah, we do have, particularly community building, with the high school, I did ask Ray about the key, he had one. And there's also their, their grounds person has a key. So I can ask how much they go for the town, Ray said that it was a possibility, so that was, yeah.
And that's why I just want to make sure we're thinking through, is that whole, like, first hour of food was going to be crazy, it was going to be crazy, so.
Yeah, yeah, but I, the only thing holding us back is because of the roads, the danger is.
You're so, you know, this is just, you know, the thorn in your shining sock. But because of Megan's law, you have to be there. You, you, or you, or you. Somebody in authority has to be there, the mayor, the vice mayor, city manager, or the sheriff. That's the law, that's the rule, so make sure that you write that in your, okay? I mean, we don't talk about it, but it's a rule because our head is tied because of that law. So just say it.
Alright, just answer it.
Good job.
Alright, anything else? Do you have any questions? Great job. Alright, I will open this up for public comment then, or discussion. Alright, I'll open up this side for public comment, three minutes.
What is your greatest, you can see that?
Yeah, considering the fact that.
But it was a discussion, anyway, it was feeding the information. Three minutes, thirty second more, uh, please leave all comments, because we take the.
I just feel like ninety percent of what you said, what happened back in nineteen ninety one when there was a spill? Did you only have a regulation going down with the, the, uh, alarms and that? Everybody got a piece of paper from the city, they'd go city, and all this was already done, so is this just an update of what was done then? And I still have a little paper saying how many, you know, what was for fire, what was for evacuation, what was for whatever. So where, are you, are you just updating from nineteen ninety one? Yes, well, okay. Did you already have a plan, actually? Yeah, maybe updating.
Is there any other further public comments on the side? Seeing none, I will close public comment. All right, most of our discussion here, saying, uh, thanks very much for working on this. Uh, since cell phones worked, invented computers, barely a thing, and I was one year old in the language of that last time, it's been seen primarily.
I've had so much changes on a yearly basis to imagine, it'd be gone thirty, forty years or so, it's, it's just incredible. So thank, and, and just to be clear, what is happening is it's a complex thing and every year it changes all kinds of things. And so he took it and really put in all the work to say, okay, what does the world look like today? And I think it's an excellent job and, and that's all.
So, yeah, we're, uh.
Also, I, I did want to see one quick thing, I would vote that at the next meeting, especially with the new council members, you don't just rush to it, but you give the whole presentation, so anyone who hears at that time and all the new members get a chance to hear, really, it's important to do that. So, my thought.
Is this on the side, should we make a copy of it?
It's on the side, yeah.
I'll go to the side. Man, are we moving on?
Uh, there's more discussion.
Yeah, I'll say thank you, Stephen, and all the staff and, uh, partners, it was, uh, it was a monumental task, I appreciate it.
All right, um, that, no further discussion, we will, we'll move on.
I'll move on to table fourteen, D C and D for future, uh, or at least your head.
All those in favor?
I have a second, I'll second, right.
All those in favor, I, and with that, um, is your name, I guess?
I do have some, there's an answer next week.
Yeah.
Um, our last person without power just got power, just got text, so. So, um, upon, uh, upon prospect, Frank Alessi.
Whoa.
Is that Frank?
Frank, no, no, Frank, Frank's sitting on my couch right now because she doesn't have power at her house. And, um.
Which was, which was?
She lives on financial, now you're going to say, oh, that's in Shattuck, I don't need this. But it's, they, they got power at the trailer park at eight this morning, and she's just like right here, but she don't have no power here. So I told her that you're staying in my house, we're, we're going to, we're going to go see if the light's on, if the light's on, we'll take her home, but it's not. She ain't spending two nights alone in the cold, she's a devil, okay? But.
He's only eighty-six, he's young.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn?
All right, I need you adjourned.
It's all right. Yeah.
Bruce.
I don't deserve it. I, we, we have moved, we got a time of, when we're going, so, I, I, I'm, it is going to be you. But if we know, yes, it's, it's hard to be, uh, you are a girl, and she's very stern.